Vice President Hildegarde, Agüinaldo, we're ready to start.
Mic check, can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order this morning on June 26 at 11:04 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meetings, meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org forward slash Ford. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out public comment card and submit to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q and A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda, a reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, Teri. If I could ask you to please call the role.
Hildegarde, Agüinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a quorum. Vice President Agüinaldo.
Very much. Now we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Trustee Perry, will you do us the honors? Thank you very much, Trustee Perry. Does anyone have any proposed changes to the order of the agenda? Hey, we will keep it as it is and move to our next item, which is the president's report. As you can tell, I am stepping in the shoes of our fearless leader, President Costa, today and don't have much by way of formal remarks. But I will say that many of our students are on summer break, yet all of their colleges and districts are doing the hard work of moving the needle on student success year round. So thank you to President Menon and her staff and to all of our stakeholders, especially to our hosts here at Citrus College for their year round work on student success, which is apropos given our unique Calbright model. And with that, I'll pass it to President Menon.
Thank you, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee. So a few weeks ago, Calbright published our first statewide impact report with Lightcast, a labor market analytics organization. Specifically, this report focused on the critical role that California's public sector plays in the advancement of skills-based hiring opportunities. So these are good jobs in every community, in every county, every corner of California. Careers that can be game changers for Calbright students, but also adult learners across the system. As a state and as a nation, we have large gaps in our understanding of how underserved communities are actually experiencing the labor market. And we also have gaps in how we look at the skills that employers need, not just the jobs that they need to fill immediately. Through this report, we're seeking to better understand labor market realities from that lens, from the lens of job seekers as well as employers, so that we can advance on the ground efforts to support really talented individuals in our communities that have been on sidelines of economic and educational opportunities. I was grateful to mark the launch of this report with a discussion featuring statewide apprenticeship and labor leaders, including Abby Sney, Deputy Secretary of Workforce Strategy at the California Labor and Workforce Development Agency, Adele Burns, Deputy Chief at the Division of Apprenticeship Standards, and Arnie Salwell, Executive Director of Next Gen Policy. The theme that surfaced throughout the discussion was the shared objective of tactical collaboration between higher education and employers to drive more skills-based hiring opportunities. Skills-based hiring may seem easy in theory, but there, in fact, there are currently many roadblocks towards truly shifting towards skills-based hiring practices. At the same time, higher education has to do a much better job to support the development and the validation of skills for learners, including new and accessible models like Calbright's flexibly paced, direct assessment competency-based approach. We see this report as crucial to set a foundation where we can surface new solutions that are anchored in being responsive to the needs of both employers and of job seekers. So as we think about how to broaden the impact of this data, we're going to focus on key regions across the state to share out this report and to connect with counties, employers, other college leaders and workers to better understand how we can collectively work towards a labor market where skills-based hiring is the norm. In front of the board today, we have some critical items to present that will drive Calbright's progress and ensure we can continue mission-aligned partnerships like this one with Lightcast and many others. As per our annual budget process, today we'll share a tentative 2024-2025 budget that aligns with our strategic vision, as well as the system-wide Vision 2030 roadmap and continues investment in our student-centered design. As we've seen in the last two years, Calbright's student body has tripled in size. We've grown to serve students in 52 out of 58 counties in California. We've received accreditation and we continue to partner across sectors, both statewide and nation and across the nation, to drive better student outcomes. In turn, our operational capacity has to reflect that growth. The fiscal year's tentative budget supports our efforts to serve more students and to serve them in a way that actually drives their success. This means meeting our students where they are by advancing our research and design-driven approach to strengthen student outcomes. And it allows us to refine the flexible, accessible and supportive learning environment that has become the hallmark of the Calbright model. A model that our students consistently say works for them versus a traditional model they have to squeeze into. To do this, we're budgeting for more members of the Calbright Student Support Team and Technology Teams to strengthen our highly individualized student journey, additional technology and learning infrastructure to support our student-centered educational and support experiences, sustained investment in research and development, including mission-driven partnerships to carry out our statutory mission and mandate, and the development of a sustainable funding formula that doesn't compromise our flexibly paced programs and those that actually scaffold student support. Again, this is just a tentative budget that leaves room for growth and uplifts our ability to reach more working age Californians with accessible education and an actual pipeline to good jobs. In order to serve more adult learners, later in this meeting, we'll also present contracts to support our outreach and marketing efforts that allow us to better connect and reach the working learners who can benefit the most from Calbright's model across the state. As we approach the start of the new academic and fiscal year, Calbright's momentum is palpable. I'm very proud of the progress we've made in the last year and look forward to launching new programs, collaborating across sectors on labor outcomes and building a sustainable funding model for the college. Thank you to Vice President Agüinaldo, the rest of the Board of Trustees Executive Committee. This concludes my remarks.
Next item on our agenda is a closed session, of which we have none, so we'll keep rolling on. The next item is actually the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? Comment?
I'm willing to move the agenda, the consent agenda, Haynes.
Second.
Your trustee Haynes, thank you. Trustee Epstein. Any public comment? I think we took that a little one.
There was no public comment.
Thank you very much, Teri. Roll call, please.
Hildegarde, Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Cam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri. We're moving to our action agenda. The first item is 4.1. To approve an agreement with Solid Digital LLC for content marketing and optimization and technical support, we welcome Mackenzie Smith as our speaker.
Good morning, Vice President Agüinaldo and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee. I'm Mackenzie Smith, the interim Vice President of Marketing Communications and Outreach for Calbright. Today, I'm bringing forth three contracts related to our digital marketing efforts that will help us continue our enrollment growth and advance our brand awareness. We'll start with the contract that encompasses our website optimization and content management, and then we'll focus on our paid advertising and video production content. Next slide, please. But first, as I'm a new face for you, I will start off by sharing Calbright's marketing and communication team's mission. We aim to tell the Calbright story in an intentional, equitable and cohesive manner, both statewide and nationally. From promoting new programs to increasing enrollment to engaging with our communities, our team plays a pivotal role in driving Calbright's growth and success through brand awareness and storytelling. Next slide. We bring this mission through to life through understanding the audiences that we're trying to reach, from current and prospective students to policymakers and beyond. And right now, Calbright is in a unique position to capitalize on our enrollment and operational growth, our apprenticeship partnerships and more to drive brand awareness and strengthen our reputation. Next slide. Our marketing team is laser focused on three main goals. The first is driving inquiries, or in other words, people who are interested in learning more about Calbright. The second is increasing enrollment, especially amongst our target population. And the third is increasing brand awareness. But above all else, the most important aspect of Calbright's marketing efforts is to connect with learners who we know are the hardest to reach. Those who are 25 years or older, members of the BIPOC community, and those in underserved communities. Our marketing touchpoints are often the first connection that a prospective student has with Calbright. And so we're continuously measuring our efficacy and improving how we can better engage with our target population. And since 2021, we've seen a significant increase in enrollment, which is over 800% and with more than 70% of the students identifying as BIPOC. We've also seen an increase of 500% in certificates awarded. And while we can attribute that growth to the introduction of our new in-demand programs and a wide range of student success efforts, it's clear that our marketing is working to drive more folks to the website, pique their interest in our college and ultimately enroll at Calbright. Next slide. With that, our marketing tactics are centered around organic media, meaning owned media like our website, our blog content, our email programs and social media channels, and P media, meaning our Google search advertising, social media ads and more. And our marketing team leads the strategy with specialized services from both Solid Digital and Compete Digital to marketing firms who work hand in hand with us as part of our overall approach. For fiscal year 2025, we're proposing new contracts with both firms, starting off with Solid Digital for content marketing and optimization support. Next slide. For context, Solid has been engaged with Calbright since late 2021, after being selected as a top vendor during an RFP process. They supported the redesign of calbright.edu, which was then calbright.org before our accreditation. And that acts as the front door for Calbright, featuring program descriptions, relevant blog content and additional information about the college's offerings. Solid continues to serve as a strong guide to drive the C centred site through their unique digital growth program. And that utilizes ongoing analysis and optimization of our content and keywords throughout our website to see how we can best message ourselves to those interested in us. Of course, with this comes site maintenance and page expansions as we grow rapidly. And Solid has and can continue to offer strategic guidance in building out the site. Their expertise also helps build our team's capacity to learn what's working and where we can adjust as we better understand how to increase our search engine optimization in-house. Our organic website traffic, which again is non-paid and attributable to our overall marketing efforts, has contributed to an increasing share of overall traffic to our website. And this in turn helps speed an average of over 6,000 conversions, meaning folks who complete forums on our website, which is the step right before the CCC application. And this underscores the long-term value of our web design and the content efforts and represents the long-term marketing value for the college. It's clear that Solid continues to add value to Calbright's marketing efforts, both as a resource for search engine optimization as well as website design and management. And as the college rapidly grows and as we strive to reach more students in every corner of the state, it's critical that we utilize Solid's expertise to advance our website visibility and ultimately our enrollments. Next slide. So I'd like to request a new contract with Solid beginning on July 1st, 2024, for a not to exceed amount of $89,400, which includes marketing and optimization services as well as website maintenance and technical support. Additionally, we'd like to request that staff have the ability to renew for up to two additional years, the end of the 2024-2025 fiscal year. So I'll pause there.
So, thank you for that. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Vice President, can I be recognized?
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, so a couple of questions. So does, so does this mean, because I'm used to the, it being that we, that the contract has the ability of being renewed two additional years, but there has never been money associated with it, which means that the entity can go back out if they needed to, to do it. But as it's written here, it sounds like the assumption will be in those next two years, it would then be solid. But is there flexibility that it would not?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you for that. The second question I have, does this also mean that what we're voting on is an additional $178,000 that is indeed encumbered for the next two years? I don't know if you can answer that, but.
Yes, so no, we're just focusing on the $89,400 for the next fiscal year. And then within the contract, we are asking for the flexibility to be able to renew this contract instead of going out for another RFP, given the ability.
So you would then come back to us after this fiscal year and then say, and we would then vote on that?
No.
Okay, then you are, in that you are encumbering, you're sitting aside the money, if not.
Yeah, we're asking the delegation of the board to allow us to renew the contract and not to exceed.
Okay, so the answer is what we're voting on is $89,400. And in addition, for maximum over the next three years, an additional 178,800. Am I understanding that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
So I'm looking at counsel just to.
I think. I don't know about my colleagues. And I'm fine with it. It's just that it was unclear relative to those two items. And I don't know, and so let me just say that, you know, I recommend the approval of the solid agreement as written here with those understandings.
Trustee Haynes, we can't see you all that well from, from this location. So, Trustee Epstein, if you have a question, just chime in, please.
Chime. I just have a simple question. You put up there a digital values 38.8. What does that mean?
Sure. So Solid Digital has their own unique measurement of a client's kind of digital value overall on their website. And so 38% means that in the last year that we've been using them, our growth in our website and the traffic has grown to a 38% increase in the digital value, meaning that folks are using our website, our keywords that we're using throughout the site, our blog content, and also within the main actual content of the site is actually working. And so they have a whole analysis, and I'm happy to send this to you afterwards if you'd like to learn more about their digital growth program that they do. But they're one of the only firms that kind of has this unique analysis that they can look through a website's content and figure out how it's actually working for the audience that we're growing towards.
And does that relate to the conversion rate too? How many actually sign up? Is there a direct connection?
Yes, definitely a direct connection there. And again, like I said, it's 6,000 folks that convert across organic and paid direction to the site.
Those we're connecting are, you may recall that when we did the website redesign, we made a very intentional choice to really gear the entire website towards the primary user as the learner, different than the way that we typically see in college websites. And so part of what this is telling us is the design decisions that we made around the website and to optimize for the primary way that learners find us, which is connecting to us through the website, is being achieved. And so I do, I do think it's a, it's not a small point on the, on the metric side to be able to understand that this, this, the, this idea or this transformation that we talk about in terms of the relationship with the learner is really co-facilitated through the way that we make choices about how we leverage and use the website to connect them.
Are there any other questions on this agenda item?
It's a small thing. I can't access my computer. Can you go back to the very first slide, I think, of the presentation? Maybe it's the second. And connect to the internet. Also, remember Epstein at all, if you could chime louder, it would be great. It's also hard to hear all of you. So I think it's the first slide of this presentation. Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure what I saw when I saw the opening slide was both of the photos, it appeared had only people who identify as male. And given this, I know this isn't for our consumption, but just moving forward, I thought I would point it out. And that perhaps, given this is a communications vehicle, we might want to mix that up a little bit.
The most common.
Yes, that's definitely understandable. I am the sole, one of the sole MarCom teams folks in the San Francisco area. So these are photos, of course, from when our team was in person at different outreach events in Southern California, but definitely quite well taken and we can adjust the diversity of those photos in the future.
Let's put accurate. Um. Okay. Are moving then to a motion. May I have a motion, please?
So this is Haynes. I approve the agreement with Solid Digital LLC for content marketing and optimizing and technical support commencing on July 1, 2024, for not to exceed amount of $89,400 for the first year and authorize staff to renew up to two additional years at the end of the fiscal year 2425 contract for a maximum total of 100, sorry, not for a maximum of 178,800 in total.
Trustee Haynes, Terry, any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Very much. If you may take the roll, Terry.
We need a second. Don't we need a second?
Perry seconded.
You don't want me to second it, right?
Hildegarde, Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, Vice President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much. You, you guys can hear us well? I'm a little concerned that you didn't hear Trustee Perry's second.
Oh, I.
We did not.
I don't think you heard the second.
Okay.
I hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. I'll try not to be so demure moving forward.
That was a problem with you.
Pretty hard. All right.
Strike that comment for the record.
Let's move to the next item, to approve an agreement with Compete Digital LLC for enrollment, marketing and advertising support. And we'll stay with our interim Vice President Smith.
Perfect. Terry, I think if you go two more slides, that would be perfect. Great. So as I mentioned, or I guess one more slide after that. Or before that.
Give the, those two slides.
Two slides before.
Oh, two slides before. That was two slides before.
The ninth slide. Perfect. Great, thank you. So as I mentioned before, our enrollment and marketing efforts are a key factor to driving more students to Calbright and also boosting awareness about our new programs and partnerships. We work with Compete Digital for these efforts to optimize our ad campaigns across various platforms and to analyze what's working and where we can improve on a weekly basis. Within the last year, paid search efforts, which are supported by Compete's work, made up 60% of our website's daily traffic. And this means that if someone were to search California Online College into Google, an ad for Calbright would pop up. And we can then track who is searching and also target them on Facebook or LinkedIn or any other platforms that they are using. And it's critical to have these multiple touchpoints such as these for coverage brand to actually stick for a prospective student. Organic traffic meeting when folks search us through a search engine and end up on our site increased by 20%. Direct traffic when prospective students physically type in our website URL increased 13%, which we can infer stems from the investment and performance increases in paid search advertising through Compete's efforts. Compete has also created a detailed and customized analytics dashboard to fully understand where interested parties are located, how they're finding out about Calbright, and then the efficiency of these ads over time, both in terms of acquiring student prospects, but also extending to who among them actually submits a full Calbright application and ultimately enrolls in the college. And through these impressive results, Compete has clearly demonstrated a strong understanding of our audiences and their needs and has an ability to be flexible as we go along. And I'm confident that they can achieve strong outcomes as we strive to reach over 5,000 students and prepare for about six new program launches in the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So with that, I'd like to request a new contract with Compete to begin on July 1st, 2024, for a not to exceed amount of $182,000 for this fiscal year. This also includes $50,000 in prepaid advertising funding, where Calbright lacks direct invoicing capabilities as some platforms like Facebook only accept credit cards, not credit terms. We'd also request that staff can renew this contract similar to the solid contract at the end of each fiscal year over the next three years. And next slide, please. And I'll leave up the, the contract there for the 4.2 item. There are any questions?
Chime.
The trustee Epstein.
I have a couple of questions that are kind of semi-related to this, but you know, everybody's been reading about how Google's doing these AI search results top. Has that affected us? Have you looked into that?
Yeah, and Compete definitely works with that as well. But I think for the most part, when you search California Community College or online college, the sponsored ads will kind of show up first before the AI.
Can you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last little part.
Sure. When you search California Online College or, you know, when prospective students are searching for a community college like us, a lot of the sponsored ads will show up first, meaning you can click on us before the AI-generated answer comes up.
So the sponsored ads come up first, then the AI, and then just the regular Calbright.
Correct, yes.
The other thing is, there hasn't been much up there about YouTube. Do we do much on YouTube? I mean, I've looked at our YouTube site. We don't seem to post a lot there. I mean, it's, what's our theory of the case regarding YouTube?
Sure. So right now, we post obviously a lot of the recordings for the Board of Trustees. And then we also, in the end of this presentation, will bring forward a contract again with Compete for more creative and video production items. And as we're growing, we're connecting with alumni, we're connecting with current students to actually increase our presence with videos, both across our social media platforms and on YouTube as well. And so the YouTube channel right now for us is mostly phoned media, so anything that we are putting out for ourselves. And we've found over time that the Google search paid advertising and display advertising through other social media platforms has given us more results than kind of advertisements on. given us more results than kind of advertisements on YouTube. But that's something that we're working as well with Compete to kind of utilize their dashboard to see where we can adjust our spending across the multiple marketing platforms that we can use.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an expert. I read so many people that say Prime is the first place they go.
Right.
Even in search.
Yeah.
This is just even more beyond, but what about TikTok?
So we're actually working with the California Workforce Accelerator potentially in the future for some TikTok advertising. And so we're definitely looking into that. And we're definitely exploring within this new contract, you know, potentially Spotify or radio ads as well, as well as TikTok. Because TikTok's main audience is actually our students. It's like the 25 plus.
We wouldn't do our own TikTok.
No. Yeah, we would mostly just do advertisements. So in my mind, given that we don't have a physical campus, it's more difficult to actually create that content organically. That is interesting to the prospective student.
I will just say like, we're very disciplined about our marketing spend because it's critically important. So we're not, we, while we love to explore and try and be creative, we're also looking at the data to really understand where, where is there the best connection penetration? You know, outcomes being driven in terms of how we're measuring connection to the traffic and website and ultimately throughput into enrollment. And so I like all the novel stuff also, but I will say like, I think we're, I do want to point out, we're being very sharp and disciplined and careful about our marketing spend.
You used the term somewhere prepaid advertising.
Yes.
What does that mean?
And the prepaid advertising is something that we would like to bring forward. So right now, given that we don't have high value credit cards to be able to use for prepaying our advertisements on social media ads, we would then prepay Compete as a firm to be the middle person for that.
So that's, that's not a financial issue at all. It's just a, and it's, it would be simpler if we had it our own, or this is just as efficient for us.
This is just as efficient. It would, you know, maybe in the future, we can definitely take this in-house to be able to kind of prepay ourselves. But for right now, given that Compete is able to see our full dashboard of advertising on social media platforms, it's easiest as they contribute to our Facebook ads and our LinkedIn ads through that way.
Okay. So I want to follow Tom in that. Okay. So it's not that we just don't have a credit card. We've made a decision that this is an easier way to do it. And there's no sort of downside to that. Or is there a downside?
There's no downside to it. And we have the ability to stop that funding if needed and the ability to pause it or change it to a different type of advertising platform as we need it. So we are just kind of paying them to be able to pay the vendors, AKA, you know, Facebook or LinkedIn for us.
And so I didn't, I didn't understand the con, the context when you guys were talking about high value. What were you talking? What were you talking about? I didn't understand that part of the conversation.
So I think we made, and Letizia, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we made a decision early on that our credit cards were not, would not be used for very large purchases similar to those advertisements.
These would be very large and we're not in that, we are not in that category at this point. So.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
I, I think you should actually read these into the record, the whole thing. Cause it is different.
And I'll let somebody else.
Okay, then, then I will move because I think they need to be into the record.
The whole agenda.
No, 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 no. Just the, at the top, there is, you know, I approve the agreement for it. It's only a paragraph, but it's very clear. And if anybody questions it, it is, it is in the record, what we need to do.
Are you moving?
Yeah, Tom's moving.
I'm looking to approve the agreement with paid for enrollment, marketing and advertising for commencing July 1, 2024, for a not to exceed amount of 182,000 for the first year. And authorize staff to renew at the end of each fiscal year for the next three years with a not to exceed amount of 500, 6,920 dollars in total.
Haynes will second that.
Barely hear you guys, but I think it's because trustee Epstein just speaks very softly.
Well, Haynes doesn't.
Definitely does not. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Terry. If I could ask you to take the role then.
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries Vice President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. Interim Vice President Smith, we're sticking with you again for item 4.3 to approve the agreement with Compete Digital LLC for video production and creative support.
Thank you. Terry, you can go to the next slide, please. Finally, we also work with Compete to support our team with video production and specialized creative design services such as motion graphics. Short-term video, short-form videos have been statistically proven as high-value marketing assets. And especially as a new college, it's important for us to clearly communicate who we are and what we do in a succinct manner. And videos are incredibly helpful for this. Compete has helped us create program-specific videos, student testimonials, and introductory video on the unique model of Calbright. And then welcome videos for our students and new employees to tell our story. We're hoping to continue these efforts in the new fiscal year for alumni testimonials, new program explainers and partnership collaborations. As an example, I'd love to share a video produced by Compete featuring Calvert's very, very own Alicia Rankell.
Right, online. And ever since I've been doing so much more in there, I've been trying to get in every single club, every single station, and it's been Calbright. And even if it's not like in-person stuff, it's still very, like, it's real, like, it's setting in. My goal is to complete the program. If I'm in the Bay Area, tech is like, it's like completely huge. You know, I'm just kind of like setting myself up in order to build that position the best I can.
If you were able to hear that. If you were able to hear that, Alicia was talking about the importance that Calbright has had for her life in particular, and Compete's voiceovers are much better than that audio production. So just for future reference, so everyone knows. But we truly realized Compete's value during our production day for this video, among the other videos that we have produced with them so far back in February. They understood how to translate our students' voices into actual visual stories and how to talk to Alicia and other students in order to kind of really pull out those important pieces about Calbright and how Calbright has kind of helped them, you know, create a pipeline to a better job or just a better life for their own families. And they continue to bring fresh ideas to communicate Calbright's vision. And then the next year, we're hoping to revamp our homepage video on the website, do a few more explainers on programs and our student success efforts and really inform the public and prospective students about Calbright in video form. Next slide, please. And so I'd like to request a new contract with Compete this time for video production and design support to begin on July 1st for a not to exceed amount of $100,000 for this fiscal year. And similarly, we'd also request that staff can renew this contract at the end of each fiscal year over the next three years. And you can go to the next slide, which will have a little bit more of the details on top.
Very much. Interim Vice President, Tom, is that you chiming in?
Yes, very loudly. I just wanted to know what the rationale was for not doing competitive bidding.
And so Compete was what we used last year through an RFP process. And so they have worked with us in the past and have done a really great job, as you can see with our students and kind of better understanding the student voices, both through our paid marketing efforts as well as through the video efforts as well. And so we did go through an RFP process with them in the past year and given that.
For the same, for the same tasks?
Yes. Yeah, for the paid advertising and also for the video.
This is kosher.
Yes. And so I'll just add that it was for a one-year contract and that's why we're extending. We're satisfied with the level of service.
Yeah, I guess if we could also ask if the previous contract allowed us to renew under the terms that are similar to this particular motion. I mean, I think there's, there seem to be some questions around how we are approving the following fiscal years. Is that kosher?
Hello, this is Letizia Ramirez, General Counsel, just for the record. So to answer your question, Vice President Aguinaldo, the last year's contract was only for one year and it was under 100,000. And at that point, we wanted to, you know, we did an RFP, they were selected and based on their performance, we're satisfied and under the interim VP's leadership, we now also want to just extend the services for additional, to the maximum allowed by law, which is five years. And also just streamline the approval. So get the delegated authority from the board to renew for additional years if we're satisfied, or if not, there's a change in direction. I mean, there might be something else out there new in the year or two that we may want to pursue. So it's just giving us flexibility at streamlining approval.
Any other questions from trustees? All right. May I have a motion, please?
Pam's going to make me read anything.
We're chiming in from Southern California, louder than you Northern California people.
Steve Rawlings will, will move.
I'll make the motion. Member Perry, I move to approve the agreement with Compete Digital LLC commencing on July 1st, 2024, for not to exceed amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year 2425 and authorize staff to renew at the end of each fiscal year for two additional years with a not to exceed amount of $300,000 in total.
Appreciate the clarity. May I have a second, please?
Pam Haynes seconds.
Do it. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Terry. If I could ask you to call the role, please?
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries Vice President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. The next item on our agenda is item 4.4 to approve the no-cost addendum to extend the professional services agreement with V Chief. Welcome our VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development, Marissa Bold, to the podium here in SoCal.
Ew, and okay, this is automatic. We'll make sure that we can do our best to hear each other. So thank you, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the board. Good afternoon. I am, my name is Marissa Bold. I'm Calbright's VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development. I'm here today to seek approval of a no-cost extension to a professional services agreement with V Chief. Following an RFP process in 2021, V Chief has been providing services to support Calbright College. The scope of work focuses on high-level strategic operational work, helping the college develop new systems and processes and providing additional capacity and support and inflection points during the startup phase for the college. We're now entering the final phase of our work with V Chief. As we initially aim to do, we have diligently ramped down the engagement with V Chief and therefore we have additional funds available. Given the careful spend down of funds, we're requesting approval for an extension to the professional services agreement with V Chief through February 21st, 2026, as allowed by the RFP with no additional funds. Thank you for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions. No slides or anything fancy.
The trustee questions?
Yes, Pam Haynes, Madam Vice President.
All right.
Okay, so I just have one question and it is, so with this, with this remainder, can you provide some specificity of what's left to be? What are the tasks that are left or what are the needs to be left to be done by using this last bit of money?
Yes, absolutely. So they've been helpful at past inflection points, things like helping develop our integrated student support model and dial pad or our migration of students from essentials, end of term survey, different things at different inflection points. And going forward, they're going to work with us on supporting the development and implementation for our newest division, the one I'm here representing, Sustainable Growth and District Development, and support for innovative efforts like our tools competition, our innovation in our efforts to support student success, philanthropic engagement and related systems, processes and capacity, scale and broadening impact, presentations, outreach, documentation, things like that. So new systems and processes at this inflection point, but all related to our startup and capacity building and things that then over time we have the internal capacity to sustain. Happy to share anymore, just a last.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? And I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, there is no public comment, Vice President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry.
Edamant. I move to approve the no-cost extension to the professional services agreement with V Chief commencing on July 1st, 2024 through February 21st, 2026.
Thank you very much, trustee Rawlings. May I have a second? Thank you very much, trustee Perry. No public comment. Terry, if you could call role, please.
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries Vice President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry. And with that, we'll move to the last item on our action agenda, which is the Career Catalyst Program Agreement Amendment. And we'll have Vice President of Learning Instruction, Shannon McCarty for that item.
Thank you, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the board. I am Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction. And today I am here seeking board approval of the Career Catalyst Program Agreement Amendment. As you may recall, in fall of 2022, Calbright launched a program to provide internship, peer support and leadership opportunities to current Calbright students. We proudly call this program the Experiential Learning and Leadership, or EXL, L program. To streamline the operations and payment process, Calbright is utilizing the Career Catalyst platform, which is provided by the Foundation of California Community Colleges. Approval of this amendment would allow us to continue that relationship. Due to, due to the success of the program, we are proud to report that Calbright has hired 51 peer tutors since 2022. The peer tutors have actually hosted 3,727 tutoring events. And looking forward, we will continue to expand these offerings to ensure we have peer tutors across all current and future programs, including Network Plus, project management, later in the fall, launching human resources, learning development, and even our community health worker program. Over the last year, the EXL program actually expanded internship roles beyond peer tutoring to include student ambassadors and project interns for a collective total of 32 student positions. And I want to take a moment just to highlight the work of the project interns. And it's a really a role which empowers students to utilize the technical and theoretical skills that they are learning in their program to support Calbright department and program initiatives. And project interns have been placed within career services, learning services, student life and alumni relations, technology and the innovation lab. So we look forward to expanding these opportunities over the next fiscal year. And the growth, success and popularity of these student opportunities are what bring me here today to request approval of the Career Catalyst Amendment to extend the agreement for additional one-year term from July 1, 2024 through June 30th of 2025, and an $800,000 increase and a total not to exceed amount of $1,177,000.
Thank you very much, Vice President McCarty. Thank you very much, Vice President McCarty. Any trustee discussion? Half, and half raised. Okay, fully raised.
Are you talking about me?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. I am just delighted that this program exists. And I'm, I'm wondering, you, from, from both sort of the perspective of the project intern roles, as well as the sort of the student ambassador. And so one, it appears is peer tutoring are, and what, can, can you explain sort of, one, what the student ambassador does that's different than the, I understand what a peer tutor is. What, what, what are we asking them to do? And then what has been the response from? What's, what is, I'm looking for a good outcome. I would assume that there is. Would you speak to that, please?
Sure, absolutely. So the difference between a peer tutor and a student ambassador, the ambassadors are really kind of helping to onboard students. So they're meeting with the students kind of one-on-one. They're actually really invested in helping to create student belonging as well. So they spend a lot of time kind of doing like Slack tours, sending out Slack messages, meeting with students, encouraging students. They've also assisted with 72 different learning community meetups. And so they're really helping to just build more of a belonging. So very different from more of a program-based focus that the peer tutors are doing, to an actually more comprehensive support across Calbright College, and really helping students feel very welcome and part of the college. Does that provide clarification between the peer tutors and ambassadors?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Perry.
I just want to say, I'm so happy to see, it's really nice to see a program that exists at the colleges being adapted to Calbright in this really creative way. I think it speaks to the approaches you're taking and the flexibility and, you know, twisting traditional learning into a more, an innovative approach that works for our most students. So for lack of a better word, it's pretty cool.
Agreed, thank you.
Any other trustee comments or questions? I'll, I'll take a liberty here to ask a question. Vice President McCarty, could you talk about how the, the peer mentors are matched to the students? Because i- is it program-based, or is it an onboarding-based mentoring program? I'm imagining a situation where one student can have more than one mentor. And if they're supposed to follow them throughout their educational journey, you might end up with multiple mentors at one time. Just trying to understand the, the model.
So in this specific model for the tutoring, we identify students that I would say are high performers within actually the program. So there's an application process, it is vetted by a selection group, and then we actually work with our faculty as well, just to ensure that those peer tutors are performing well in that program. And then they host different types of tutoring sessions. It could be one-on-one or more group-focused sessions. And students kind of opt in for those opportunities. During that connection time, a student might identify that they're working really well with a specific peer tutor, and then opt in again for those very like specific learning opportunities with that peer tutor. And from like a mentoring kind of student ambassador side, we're not actually matching those individuals at this time. It's more of a collective opportunity. And then through either like engagement, conversation, the learning community conversations, students might kind of self-pair or self-select who they would like to continue with, to engage with on an ongoing basis. And it's more of like a buddy system at that point.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Right, hearing no other questions, I'll take a motion.
Oh, Vice President Aguinaldo, there's no public comment.
Thank you, Terry.
I move that we approve the Career Catalyst Program Agreement Amendment for an additional one term, one-year term, commencing July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025, with an $800,000 increase and a total not to exceed the amount of $1,770,000.
I'll second.
Very much. Trustee Rollings for your motion, and trustee Perry for your second. No public comment. Terry, if you could take the roll, please.
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Hanes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rollings.
Aye.
Motion carries Vice President Aguinaldo.
Well, thank you very much, Terry. We're chugging along here to the information and reports section of our agenda to item 5.1, which is our draft 2024 to 2025 annual budget. And with us, we'll have the Chief Financial Officer, Ange Tolentino, presenting.
Good morning, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of board and trustees. My name is Ange Tolentino, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here to discuss the draft 2024-25 annual budget of Calbright College. Next slide, please. The agenda for this presentation includes a Calbright overview, budget presentation and process, 2024-2025 draft budget, which includes a strategic vision framework, major budget goals, consolidated draft budget, and next steps. Next slide, please. Calbright overview, next slide. So the Calbright overview, the Calbright fiscal year 2024-2025 annual budget represents strategic goals for 2025, and is based on an explicit assumption of flat annual funding of $15 million per year. The overall budget for fiscal year 2425 sets ambitious goals to continue the phase of high-quality growth. Calbright College continues to implement and refine a robust implementation plan. And one thing of note is that the draft budget for 2425 is only 5.5% higher than the previous year. This is due to the judicious use of resources the college has projected for the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide, please. Budget presentation and process. Next slide. Board policy 6200 budget preparation. This budget presentation fulfills the main objective of Board Policy 6200, where the budget process and timeline are presented to the board. Specifically, the annual budget shall support the college's strategic priorities. The assumptions are presented for board review. The timeline for the annual budget was presented to the board in March of this year. The general reserves shall be 5% of the total operating expenses. Any changes in assumptions will be reported to the board in a timely manner. Budget projections address long-term goals and commitments. Next slide, please. Budget, budgeting process. As a quick review, the budgeting process contains three main parts: assumptions, adjustments, and finalization. Department's assumptions were derived through a lengthy process where budget managers created their assumptions early this year, using in part the existing 2024 budget and with a comparison to their actual expenses. We then had a series of meetings between budget managers where the departmental budget assumptions were refined with guidance from senior management. Further adjustments were made to arrive at the final draft budget. Next slide, please. Next is the 2024-2025 draft. The first, this budget is aligned with the 2024-2027 strategic vision framework. As President Men discuss the priorities of the strategic vision framework, I'd like to briefly cover the underlying goals supporting the priorities. Expand multi-dimensional opportunities for adult learners, foster skills and drive achievement, build and maintain a cohesive culture, develop sustainable funding approach, cultivate institutional awareness, and finally forge and expand strategic partnerships. The strategic vision framework leads into the major budget goals stated on the next slide. Next slide, please. These are the major budget goals. There were three major budget assumptions which drove our budget process. The first is to expand multi-dimensional opportunities, but simply, we're adding to our program offerings. The second is to build and maintain a cohesive culture where we're expanding operational capacity. And the final goal is to forge and expand strategic partnerships where we garner new partnerships and relationships. Next slide, please. So we're implementing four new programs under our occupational clusters. As Calbright's strategic vision, we are launching up to four new programs designed specifically to prepare adult learners for good, available jobs. These new programs will fill gaps in the availability and accessibility of high-quality, high-value training programs, providing working adults with an affordable public alternative. Each program will provide a specific skill set that employers want, and which our students can directly apply for in the working world. For many of our students, our programs offer flexibility for different roles within and across industries. So we're implementing four new programs noted in bold, which is segregated on the four occupational clusters. Under design innovation, we're launching the user experience and user interface program. Under healthcare, we're launching the community health worker. And under the business cluster, we're launching the human resources talent and acquisition, and human resources learning and development program. Next slide, please. So expanding operation capacity, operational capacity. Our second major budget assumption centers on expanding our operational capacity. A key component of Calbright's growth is ensuring appropriate staffing across all levels of the institution, so that we can continue to operate effectively as we expand during this immediate, high-quality growth phase. Critical assumption to serving our expanding student population, their needs, certain people, expertise, systems, and technology needed to serve our students. So taken directly from our 2024-2027 strategic vision framework, we'll focus on expanding operational capacity in step with enrollment increases and the creation and launch of new programs. Complementing the growth, we'll maintain, we'll remain committed to evaluation and optimization, exploring new ways of engaging with students to nurture their success, and building the technology platforms necessary to reimagine teaching, learning, and support with the context of Calbright's model. Currently, the staffing increases are primarily within learning instruction, student success, and information technology departments. Next slide, please. Budget assumptions, compensation increase. This slide details the effects of the compensation increase for employees that were present in fiscal year 2024. Annual salary increases were approximately 1.9 million, with the benefit increases equally in approximately 1.2 million, with a combined total of salary and benefits equaling 3.1 million. The section on the right explains the main cost drivers of these increases, which are 5% for step increases, 3% for salary increase, schedule increases, 2.5% off-schedule bonus, and a small increase for the ER portion of Coppers. So next, I would like to briefly discuss our final budget goal, forge and expand strategic partnerships. Our final budget goal discusses the bulk of our expenditures into existing and new strategic partnerships. These partnerships will focus on creating and expanding relationships with employers and industry. We will also identify potential opportunities to launch new, high-quality programs that are responsive to adult learners and the labor markets in key regions of the state. We are meeting with economic development leaders statewide and in critical regions, and exploring where and how Calbright can best add value now and over the next several years. Next slide, please. So now this is our 2024-2025 draft budget. So going down the budget, our state revenues are constant at $15 million. We project the local revenues, also known as interest income, to be approximately $1.2 million. Going further down the expenditures, the academic and non-academic totals reflect the increases in staffing mentioned earlier in this presentation. Benefit totals are a result of the employer contributions to statutory environments, Coppers, Cisters, health and welfare benefits, and social security payments for the applicable employees. The other operating expenses, services are comprised largely of consultants and contracts. Capital outlays comprise the two major factors, headquarters lease and related regional offices, and student and computer equipment and software. Budget numbers reflect the various initiatives mentioned early in this presentation. So at the bottom of the slide, you'll notice that we have 5.2% of operating expenses set aside as a reserve. Next slide, please. So the next steps are staff will continue to work to refine the 2024-2025 draft budget and present for final approval in August. Staff will continue, close the financial records for the fiscal year ending 2024, and submit the year-end expenditures report to the chancellor's office. That will start work with the Calbright auditors for the 2324 audit by July, August, 2024. Next slide. Thank you. So, I'd like to open up for any questions.
See questions?
I have a couple. I think the first thing is that I noticed that we're getting $15 million a year, spending $3 million just on compensation increases. So 20% of our revenue is going just for compensation increases, not for any other program. That's, that's not sustainable in the long run. And so I, I look forward to hearing about the new revenue strategy going forward.
Yeah, that, that's fair. I think it's, it's, it makes sense that we're only looking at one side of the equation right now at this stage in the budget process around very controlled and conservative expenditures. The increases are pursuant to contractual agreements largely that we have with our existing represented faculty and staff, and then align increases across our non-represented employees. And so I will say that those figures are fixed. And I think once we get the second side of the equation as we progress through the budget development process towards getting to a final budget, we'll be able to more accurately look at and reflect revenue coming in beyond the $15 million annual allocation that we've been given at that state.
Yeah, at some point, it becomes important, I think, at the time that we're doing the compensation, that we you know, consider what our budget resources are, because that's clearly not sustainable.
Yeah, I, I know, so we are, we will be entering a new round of bargaining pursuant to the pending expiration of two agreements in the, you know, over the course of the next year. And so that will be a conversation that the board will be actively involved in, and the, the expiration of the, the sort of cost and other provision implications and the negotiations of those contracts will, the board will be made privy of and be obviously a part of that discussion.
Yeah, the other thing is, I notice we have a 5.2% reserve, and, and I guess it's in our, I don't know exactly what's in our, our standing orders, but 5%, under the bog, 5% is the minimum. And so slicing it in 5.2% is very close to the, to the bare minimum that would put us in a, in jeopardy. And I think that we should target a little bit higher reserve in the future, so that if things don't turn out as well as we hope, that that we'd have a little more cushion here.
We can do that, definitely. We can definitely add to our reserve, yes.
And?
Thank you. So under other operating expenses and services, it's about 1.5 million. So, and it's broken up consultants, contracts.
Yes.
Is that likely? We used to have, it used to be a lot more relative to consultants. And so the question I have, I, and I didn't compare this to other, other budgets. Is that number going down because we've been doing all of this hiring? Is it in the right column that it goes down? You know, I guess I'm sort of saying it sort of that way. I suspect that in many cases, because this is a high-tech institution that is, that drives a lot of what, what our students use in order to get through the programs, that that's going to be a constant. It's, that is all we're always going to be having to look at. What is the new thing that we need to be doing in order to perfect, perfect that? But I guess, who's in this consultant group now? Is, is there room for that number to go down? Or now are we, is it stabilized and these are the folks that we actually need to do work that we really can't hire for?
To answer your question, if we look at year-over-year, vis a vis what we spent for consultants versus the previous year, the numbers are approximately the same. And the reason for that is because of the fact that in this fiscal year, we're actually doing a lot more, or unique programs that we didn't adjust for, or we didn't account for in the last fiscal year. Some of the things that we're doing this year that are unique to this year is we're looking at things such as credit for private learning. We're also looking at other programs such as attracting new revenues to their college. And in the previous year, we didn't have consultants and other subject matter experts concentrating on those factors. So for the programs that we launched last year, a little bit different than the programs that we're looking for in this year. So if anything, the cost for the consultants have shifted from various programs that we had in the fiscal year, previous year, to new programs that we're launching, and, and investing in regards to how we can better address the needs for our students. So it's slightly different in regards to the program mix.
All right, so that was, that was really helpful to, to understand that case.
Can I add one?
Yeah, please.
Absolutely. I think that's a, that's a great way of describing it. And, and the one thing that I do think is important for us to differentiate is the model itself of what we do. So when we create new programs, new capabilities, new services, those are, um, those are in the, the nature of costs associated with one-time expenditures before we get to a steady state environment, before we're, we're able to have to make the long-term financial obligations to the permanent staffing levels that we'll need across the organization. I do want to point that out because that's a, that's consistent with the, the way that the legislation um intended.
So, thank you for um clarifying even more. And so as I so as I, and I, I understand that. Thanks. So thank you for reminding me um about how, how Calbright does use one time in trying to sort of figure out the piece. And then as it is successful, moves it over into sort of an ongoing.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah. Which um and we have what, three more ye- we have three more years, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five is, twenty twenty six will be the final year of our.
Okay, this has been that long?
Right. That's okay. We're ready.
The, okay, glad to hear that from our CEO. We are ready. Um, but it does, it, it, it does um heighten um where we need to go with how we fund this. Um, and so Tom is absolutely right. And I know that you're, that's what he heard.
Core, core focus of the strategic vision and it's the core priority for, for me.
And so, just so that you know, some of your trustees are waiting on bated breath. Okay.
We've done a lot of the homework in regards to prepping ourselves for that. Uh, we've started doing a lot of modeling. We're looking at uh what we can really uh apply for and get within the college. We're doing all the necessary issues right now for that eventuality.
So there, but there's two things. One, um, there, there's the issue of trying to get by. And then there's the issue of a long-term um solution.
Yes.
And so, and you know, I'm not opposed to what, what it is to get by, but I am looking, we have to look forward because this is, this is the nut.
Correct.
This is the nut, whether this, this, this experiment that is going so well and we can look to as promise and where, where um institutional learning needs to and has to go. Um, but solve, solving for this for Calbright will be exponentially so, so, so important. Um, um. Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree. And, and I think, um, you know, the important thing is that the process of doing this and arriving at uh an approach is not just for Calbright.
Right, exactly.
The, the, the most important part of this process is that it is about creating a, a funding mechanism that is sustainable for all institutions who want to move in this direction. And, and by this direction, we mean serving this very specific population of models of, of learners around a model that works for them, which means that it's asynchronous, which means that it's skills-based and, and structurally.
Flexible.
Flexible and supported. And so all of those things uh are, have to, have to be taken into account.
Yeah.
Um, in the consideration of what sustainable funding looks like for the future to support the growth of the number of students we serve. So I think what we've demonstrated over the past three years, that's probably one of the most important takeaways is not just around how to build a continuously more effective model, but it is also about the fact that learners are seeking this out and demanding this increasingly. Uh, so this is a direction that um that holds a lot of opportunity for us, not just as Calbright for the system, also uh more broadly across the country to serve this adult learner population.
Thank you.
Um, are there other colleges that are, if you want to offer the same type of uh programs that could be helpful to to get the whole system engaged?
So I, you know, I think um often I found in my experience, Tom, like the, the, and bro, I've seen the, the, the things that are uh most important is to uh shape people's sense of what's possible. Um, so I think what happens and what's hard for us to break out from in traditional higher education has always been like, this is the envi- you know, this is the sandbox we have to live in. And so we can tweak here, we can tweak there, but fundamentally, um, it's a structural difference. So what we've kind of demonstrated to date is like what the structural ju- difference has to look like. What does the model need to be um to, to like have the, to, to fit for the learner and to support the outcomes for the learner that we intend and need to. And then what's possible in the structures, right? It's really a policy question uh in terms of how those things happen. Um, and, and, and that's where we're, that's where we're headed next. So I, what, what I imagine will happen um as we start to, to put out some of the ideas in the construct of how you, how you transition this into a sustainable funding model um is inviting that opportunity for folks to also uh see what's possible and to participate uh in raising their hand in, in moving in the direction I want to mature, in talking with colleagues in other states and with, who are doing competency-based education programs um and who are also looking and we're talking about some contexts largely of the state landscape, but also of the federal landscape. What we're finding is uh folks are actually seeking and searching for the solution. How can I do this? How can I do direct assessment? How can I do it in a way that um that allows me to deliver like asynchronous learning in this, this, in this type of way in, in a skills-based framework and be, and be supported in the policy environment and the regulatory environment for it. So um, that work is not work that we'll just do alone. The thinking um, we're probably the farthest along in just because we are attuned to and, and building the model that we seek to see the policy change and reform for. Um, but the, the, the next part of getting folks more um kind of building the coalition for for creating a focal point on like, what does that solution look like? What can it look like? And how can we um, you know, how can we get in the car and drive along with you? Um, I, is, is a very critical part of this.
Thank you very much. Our NorCal trustees, SoCal trustees, any questions or comments? Oh, okay. Um, apparently the NorCal folks beat the SoCal folks to their questions. Oh.
It's not a question. I just think, President, and I was thinking as you're speaking, the challenge that you've, you've addressed so well, which is to shape what is possible under a spotlight. Um, and that's not an easy thing to do, to um, to innovate with constraints. Um, and uh I think you and the team have done a pretty extraordinary job of that.
You're here. Um, I, I think Calbright is uh well-known for playing well with others in the sandbox, but at the same time trying very much to build an entirely new play space. Um, it's a, it's an interesting set of, of talents. Ange and, and Ajita, could you explain what we are expecting to see in August then? It doesn't sound like this budget will come before the full board, but we'll come back to the executive committee for final approval. Is that correct?
It, process-wise, it will be presented next in August in order to meet the Chancellor's Office deadline of a September submission.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Splendid.
Are purely processed.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Terry. Let's move on to item five point two then, reports on contracts and purchases. And we'll keep our CFO, Tolentino, up on the, on the stand.
Thank you. Um, for May, there were five contracts in May twenty twenty four and purchases totaling four hundred fifty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty five. Any questions?
A trustee discussion?
What CDW is?
Oh, CDW, they provide all the hardware of, in part, uh for all their students. So they're our main vendor in regards to the chromebooks that we uh give to the students. So that's primarily what it's for.
It's also a college-wise mentor.
Of course.
Big, big fan of college-wise program.
Other questions? All right, hearing none. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Terry. And with that, we'll move to our constituency group reports. We have no report from the Academic Senate, but we do have one from Cindy Carney at the Faculty Association. Cindy, you're, you're on.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Vice President Aguinaldo and esteemed members of the board. I am happy to be here today to provide an update for the Calbright Faculty Association. We are excited to share that six of our founding faculty obtained tenure in February of this year. As our founding faculty and first to receive tenure status, this is an amazing accomplishment that shows the dedication and passion our faculty have when it comes to the success of our students. Congratulations to Ashley Odell, Shemela Johnson, Michael Stewart, Denise Kamal and Elizabeth Biddlecombe on this accomplishment. I am honored to share this achievement with all of you. We recently completed bargaining on our top priorities with updates to language for working conditions and salary. I want to say thank you to Joe Shannon McCarthy and to Maya for the collaboration in this process. I also want to say thank you to the faculty for all of their collaboration and feedback. None of this would be possible without your supports, support in the process. In other updates, the Calbright Faculty Association currently continues to grow with participation of eighteen of our nineteen full-time faculty. We recently were recognized at the CCA uh Community College Association Spring Conference for being the local chapter with the largest percentage increase in full-time members, as well as the chapter with the largest overall percentage increase in members. It has been exciting to see such growth in our CFA and I am looking forward to seeing us grow even more. It has been a productive twenty twenty four so far, and I am looking forward to what the rest of the year will bring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy, and congratulations to the faculty who obtained tenure. Um, we do not have a report from the uh School Employees Association and we don't have a report from the students either. So we're going to move right into public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, Vice President Aguinaldo.
All right. Very much, Terry. Um, it looks like we are at twelve twenty four PM. The business of the Board of Trustees is now complete and we can adjourn. Thank you for your participation.